It is September ninth, twenty twenty five. It's just past six thirty. All this meeting's order. It's called the Order of Action Agenda.
Simo.
Second. Game for second. Great second, Niko. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as you know. Assistant Select Ward is committed to providing an environment of respect during our meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there's disagreement. The value of participation in our community and want all participants, including marginalized and marginalized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and everyone who participates to connect to the standards to support and respect our community. To begin our meeting this week, we'll have a a moment of silence for a dear friend. Someone who only about hundred and thirty days ago sat beside us. Karen Conley, who recently passed away, may have been one of the most fearless and selfless people that I've ever worked with and have the privilege to work with. And the decades of work that she gave to this town was remarkable. And while it's difficult to talk about, I will give, because I know she would want this, there is a glimmer of hope and happiness in the fact that her fingerprints will still be felt. There are projects that we're working on that she has helped start and she has helped initiate that we can help continue her legacy. I know that's probably one of the best things that we can do to honor her, to continue making this town a better place. Karen is just just a dear friend and someone who I know we all cared so deeply about. And not a little should we miss. She'll always be loved by this town. With that, if you could give her a moment of silence. Thank you. We will now say one word for good. We will now go, we have some we have some recognition and then we're gonna have some walk-ins that are coming in, but we have Riley for some excellent anniversary news for some more folks who've been in decades of work.
Decades.
Yes, to the town.
Good evening. Thank you for having me come here on behalf of Chief Donovan to recognize two individuals from the fire department for thirty years of service. Elena Shubri. She was appointed September fifth, nineteen ninety-five. She came to us from the Hang of commuter votes where she worked with former chief Don Murphy. She was the first female fire department in Situate. She was one of the big movements for change to adapt the facilities and to make contractual obligations. She built the maternity language that numerous towns now use as their model. She's paved the way for eight female firefighters since her appointment and we currently have six female firefighters on the fire. She's one of our first certified safety instructors. She's been involved with the safe team, which is the student awareness for higher education. For twenty-five years, she's been the team manager for ten years. In twenty-fourteen, she expanded that program to include seniors. We now have senior safe that helps keep seniors safe at home and actually have a safety program with preschooler curators. She's a past member of the honor guard, one of the county technical rescue team, a junior fire sergeant program, and a current here number of the executive board for the evening. Okay? Thank you. Like Elena, we have Lieutenant David Hermans appointed September fifth as well, nineteen ninety-five. He came to us from Brewster Ambulance Service where he was the DNT at the time. He's a graduate of the Berkwood College of Music. He plays the trumpet, trombone, and the bass as well. That's one that I mentioned. And in that regard, he performs chaps for us at all the fire department ceremonies for the last thirty years. In nineteen ninety-seven, he transitioned to paramedic. He was one of the first four paramedics for the fire department. And we were the first fire department to provide paramedic service to the local shelter. Been the union treasurer for ten years. He sits on the executive board and he was a progress committee member for twenty years. He is currently a member of the online apartment policy system. Online systems. Lieutenant Hermans.
Wonderful. We did. Don't go away yet. So to say thanks, you can say thank you.
Oh, sure. I think it's an honor to be able to present two general appreciation gifts on behalf of the town to both of you. I know you do great work and I just throw the depth that we have the privilege of thirty-year people amongst us here. I hope you can give us another thirty years. We can do that. I don't know.
You guys want to talk?
Yeah.
It was called the beer party.
It's in the box. This will be in the globe tomorrow afternoon. Niko's meeting. Uh, which one?
Thank you.
Yeah. We're doing about a third year.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
My daughter remembered the year. All right, we're now looking for any walk-ins. Anything that's not on the agenda, yes.
I can do that. I said to his chair, yes. I just wanted to thank people for coming. After wait, there was a tiny people, none know, they don't see. But I appreciate it. I thought you were helping and kind of was working. My father yesterday said, she's involved in a lot of things and maybe they'll do something for me and something like that. It's not like the time these people were and say to come in. What would you do if you were like this? I like the number of doing that. He let him way in. I'm just one person like that.
I love I I just, a few things I'll say about that. Number one, without a doubt, she's never going to be forgotten in this town. I would love to work with you to find a way that you can help remember her and her legacy and things that she's done. So I think that's a wonderful idea for us who's formed or could be the best staff in it. I don't know. I don't have right now which one that could be, but I think it's a
Yeah, it's one way of contacting and it knows what people do, so.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Again, these are for the agenda, anyone online? I'll see. All right. Go with our report to town administrator.
Good evening. Thank you. We'll start with our water update. Generally, this will be our last water update for the season. Then stop these after Labor Day, but we will keep updating people on the status for the I am making these contact because those circuit boards are in, they're being installed this week, so hopefully that'll be up online. I won't let people go nuts back online. Tech pack repawn minus three, last week minus five, reservoir minus twenty, now from last week to minus nineteen. Rainfall the last week was point zero two. That's measured Saturday to Saturday. It does not include the rain against Saturday, Sunday. Average daily demand, one point five one six million gallons a day, down very slightly from last week's one point five five six. We're getting to that trending down. Usually the wind time around million, million two, so we're trending down that direction. Central Fire Department is going to have their annual September eleventh remembrance at Station One, one forty-nine First Parish Road. This Thursday morning beginning at nine forty-five, it's a brief ceremony and we follow our refreshments at the station. We want to remind people that town beaches are no longer staffed with lifeguards, so please use caution if you decide to use our beaches. On a plus note, it is after Labor Day. You no longer need beach stakers to pack your pizzas, so feel free to just use caution if you go. Best Town Republic Health has announced that mosquito samples have tested positive in Situate for West Nile virus. Mosquito samples have tested positive in Noel, Eastern Ecoin, cephalitis. More information on these can be found on the Mass website and on the Town Republic Health. We also want residents to know that Plymouth County mosquito control accepts requests for adult mosquito control from residents. They can reach at seven eight one five eight five five four five zero at Plymouthmosquito dot com. Friends of the Situate Library having their fall book sale. Fifty percent off all fiction hardcover books with sale price at a dollar fifty. Boots hardcover classics, short stories with drama and large print fiction. Sale runs from Friday, September fifth to Saturday, September thirteenth. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday at ten o'clock, two o'clock, in the lower level of the library. Central DPW started their fall flushing program. They began hydrant flushing yesterday. They're starting at the Maple Street tank and moving down Old Open Bucket Road to the Rotary. Then they'll go back and flush sites from South Maple and Old Local Bucket. Flushing will start after the school bus lines have been completed. Residents in these areas can expect some interruption of water service and may experience this colored water. We do assign boards out also in those neighborhoods letting people know, so please check your water before you do laundry and fill up your tub. Soil construction improvement program is continuing. The contract is continuing, forming sure in-place type line. I just get that one wrong. A section of the sewer system, which includes a trenchless rehabilitation method used to repair aging in stores, pipes without the need for digging. Process restores structural integrity, seals cracks, leaks, and extends the life of the sewer system by minimizing disruption to residents, roads, and the environment. During scheduled work, residents in the affected areas may notice temporary detours, construction equipment on the roadway, and occasional sewer rotors. Residents may be notified and asked to limit the stopping of their water services if whose work on their road. Residents are also advised to leave their toilet seat lids down as activity from the equipment in the street can cause back pressure and splash toilet bowl. This week, the contract will be on Hazel Avenue, Wheelah Park Drive, and Beaver Dam Road. If you have any questions, please contact the Situate Sewer Department. Dana Faba, the Mammography Ban will be in town Thursday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. It'll be at St. Luke's Episcopal Church, right across the street here on First Parish Road. If you're a woman aged forty-year-old who'd like to schedule an appointment, please contact the Mammography Ban office, six one seven six three two nineteen seventy-four. Pre-registration is required. Finally, for this week, the food pantry continues to see deep growing. They're very aggressive for being self, most needed items, canned beets, canned ham, artificial sweeteners, pickles and olives, relish, canned sardines, canned salmon, canned clams, herbal and black tea, and canned sloppy joes. Think we dropped off the food pantry during operating hours. It'll be in bins behind the old gate school, central library, Village Mine, a show also coming. Those are the way I have to quick update this week.
When is the work gonna start at the end of surfside? They've let them put up the plastic barrier.
Which work is it supposed to start?
Um, the DC wall.
Oh, no trucks are not in that area.
No, there's no truck. There's there's like a plastic
Do you have any idea when this is gonna start?
So technically it's started, they're starting to put out the the protection, the water, and then we're gonna be meeting the contract and get a mobilization to get it out in the office.
Thank you.
Okay. I mean, the public? Yes.
One comment regarding the residential mosquito spraying.
Yes.
I called them last week and I'm not doing the actual spraying.
Doctor, anyway, even though they sent a lot of clients, they would.
What?
Even though they sent a lot of clients again, doctor?
When I called last week, that was the message that we're allowing to do the actual spraying.
Thank you.
When you need it the most.
Take that and revise it. And again, just so people know, the sewer restoration, that saves a lot of money for taxpayers. Aligning. So Kevin, thank you for going through that and investigating. It's very helpful. All right. We're gonna start. Our assistant hardware master, come on up. I keep wanting to say Fisherman's Feast, like at a restaurant. Fisherman's Fest. Yep. Sorry. You order the Fisherman's Feast, bride planner.
All the stuff.
You get everything. That's normal than I do, but yeah. Tell us about the Fisherman's Fest.
The festival I've been working on coming up after, a lot of feedback from open harbor. Lot of stuff we've been doing on harbor, but you kind of just want to keep the momentum going. Get a great place to do it. Spoke with a ton of people and everyone's just, you know, what you should do, what you should put for it. Just started putting stuff down on paper and all just kind of came together.
I love it. All right, so the dates here, let's I'm sure. September twenty eighth. September twenty eighth, looking from twelve to the five, pending a couple of part of feedback. All right. Super kid, do you have anything else you want to try? This is your sales pitch right now.
Yeah, I have everything ready to go social media wise and everything. If I had to prove one. Food trucks basically in the four corners of the theater, live music, a lot of locals, pop-up restaurants, different tents. I mean, it's gonna be a family fun.
Family. Best seafood in England.
Yeah.
Great level musicians, stuff for the kids. Sunday, twelve to five.
I know, that's
I know.
What's, how many people can you fit on a beer? We know.
Those are good drawings.
We're gonna test it. We're gonna test it.
This is the test for it.
Yeah.
Have your food.
Quick loop and go.
Motion. Well, any questions?
I have an interest. I assume we're shutting down the pier or parking vehicles during that day or afternoon.
Just for that afternoon. It's in half to five, cook a little I spoke with most of the fishermen down there. Everyone's gonna be okay. Really nobody's gonna be out that day or they are, hopefully, in a little and if somebody does come in, we can make arrangements to be the whole block there or chat over. I'll speak to the guys on the back for us.
I want to make sure that all the fishermen
Yeah.
have clarity on what the alternatives are so that they can still do their business.
Yeah, I'll make sure I can totally reach out.
So invite them to the fest. Yeah. All right, that's a question. Hey. Hold on. Go. Please.
Move to approve the special event Fisherman's Fest two thousand twenty-five to be held on the town here on Sunday, September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, from twelve noon until five PM, pending all of the paramedic feedback and move.
Still got one second, five seconds. We'll go with hers. And all in favor?
Aye.
All right, you're two animus. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Great job. All right. Well, we now have Saint Vincent de Paul. Rich. And also the Walk for the Four.
Thank you. Okay, well, then I'm also in the Saint Vincent de Paul group. And I want to thank you for your timing because right after our big fish fest, there's a great number of walks.
That's the perfect time. You get filled out and you walk, right? That's all you need.
Yeah, well, I'm part of everyone in the walk. Here we
Well, that will tell us more. This is again, part of this is your sales pitch too.
Yeah, so thank you very much for having us tonight. And we are here on part of Saint Vincent de Paul Conference, which is part of our city area of the community parish. For those that might not know much about the group, it was started back in eighteen thirty-three in France by a gentleman, Frederick Ouzan. They got eighty-eight days, so it's a great reason to be here. They were moved by the very desperate needs of the poor in their community and nobody was helping them and they kind of got challenged with like pocket being paid, but we so they set out to try to address the problem by meeting people, raising money, and providing that care. And the initiative had a profound impact and changed a lot of lives and spread quickly. And now it's worldwide and spread all over. And so it's all considered one thing, I think, so it's a cool thing. But on the home front, you know, Situate, for the last sixty-five years, we've had our own, we call ourselves Binnies. Saint Vincent de Paul Conference here at St. Mary's University Parish. We reach out and provide care to any constituent resident in need. We actually go in person and meet with them, hear their story, and then see how we can fund it and plan to help them. What we do for them is often pay bills, like utility bills, rent, car repairs, home repairs, medical bills, credit card debts. You know, families that can't afford Christmas presents, go with their other bills. We pay for some children that can't get the things that are kind of different recreational or summer camp. So we're open to a lot of things and different ways of creating and just it's staggering. We probably well know how much people make in our community town here in Situate. We do collaborate quite often with the food pantry within Situate made in Christmas, with the median kind of social workers and a lot of other groups. A lot of these people have very complex needs. We're not like doing the social worker role. We're just trying to figure out like how to pull groups together to meet your needs. So obviously that takes money. And how we do that is through a year, we have different fundraisers, we have meeting, meeting people that know someone that benefited from Saint Vincent de Paul, people that want to leave money in memory of a lot of donations, in kind donations, and then some other thing on that part. So we're stepping out for the first time this year, Saint Vincent de Paul, the National Walk. And we've been talking about it for years that we really want to do that because it's a great way to raise awareness and our kind of will help more people. So it's a walk to raise awareness and also please fund, so we're gonna generate about a hundred walkers is our goal. Getting that, but we get like yeah, right. Or we just, people are, we know they cry out like there's friends. So yeah, and so we're asking the walkers to come and to ask friends to, you know, to vin and doll, to whatever they can do to raise money. So and I think that we filled out the application, so there, you know, if you want to go into any details about the date, I'll ask you to answer any questions or?
I'll just add, we do probably about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a year in community support. Again, that varies in the amount of money that we provide. We're typically a last stop. So when the safety nets break, that's typically when we hear from people, when they're being evicted, when they're turning off their utilities, when their car insurance is no good. So we're kind of the last resort stop in many cases. So far, we've been able to sustain that. I think, as you mentioned about the food pantry, the needs are growing, the needs are becoming much more complex and our requests are significantly higher than the significant impacts of the
So about the walk, it's Saturday, October fourth. It's starting at eight thirty from St. Mary's Parish. We will, we'll start, but we're gonna have an initial other one of the pizza there is gonna start, so they lead the way, but it is sort of a rolling walk. Ask people to get there, but there's not like they're not getting shot down, so there's a mass and the loop is going from the parish center through Cool Parkway, the Hare, CPS opening there, and then walking all the way up to the lighthouse. We did secure the community center for the bathroom there. We did bring in a upper master and we have a little bit of entertainment, people are great. If people can turn around at any point, it's nice in the loop. A lot of people are very daunting behind the lighthouse, but and we're gonna have trash collection, we're gonna have distill, that's not a lot of food, but just granola bar of water and mix of coffee. They go to the hip, they're making coffee, they're nice. And we have a very, very vast volunteer group to help keep people safe and we have a police detail that's gonna start with us and then get out to the tricky points that we've isolated as the turn of America Road, it opens up people. We've also reached out to the shops in town. Many of them won't even be open at that time, but just a little bar trumpet, we're coming through and just
Our plan is to have pianist and a drummer at the bandstand as they go out and back to the parish center. We've notified the DPW, so we're standing by bringing in safety horses, especially some of the tricky areas where we've worked with officer buildings. And so they'll have a detail at the St. Mary's intersection and then once the crowd moves from there, they'll move out to the Beaver Dam. You can get a intersection and they'll remain there and then we'll have walkers walk guards or whatever stationed along the way to keep people on the sidewalk and
And there is a little stop at the lighthouse, just to keep both people with snappers.
Well, really, donation on the line. There you go.
Happy Benno sign, right?
Yes, he's real bar and he's the organ.
And we do have watering no bars. We talk to the Department of Health, I think they cleared it, so it's same. We've got the perfect administration, so you can all take it.
Done the due diligence. Let me open up. Questions, comments, concerns, questions?
Yeah, so I have a question and one comment. Is there, is the walk a common walk with other organizations across the country on the same day? Is there a coordinated effort with something like this or is it the the same good sense organization national, but this walk is just an event in Situate?
Correct, so there, the September twenty-seventh is the official date of the National Walk, but they say you can do a week or two after or any kind really.
But it is coordinated
it is a coordinated Saint Vincent de Paul walk.
And the only, the only comment I would have is, as you mentioned, harbor businesses, and if you haven't already reached out to the chamber, I would suggest just in a chamber so they're also known for a month this is happening.
Right, correct, yeah.
And we also reached out to the homeowners association out of Cedar Point, just to manage that, but there's there's gonna be a lot of people walking that day. And guys, are any questions?
I think you guys thought of everything looking at this, even with like their rain day. So past a block, I'll certainly don't add at all, that'll be blocking. You can do a virtual walk if you're not you can stroll and you can dance. It's a walk.
Mr. Chairman, just would like to compliment you guys for your dedication, the generous work you do. And I hope this is a great success and we can see it every year.
Oh, thank you. We hope so too. Thank you so much. We did invite many of our neighbors, we invited them because a lot of them are sort of new in Situate and just haven't waited to be community on a walk with us, just anonymous, you know. They're very nice reports. They're so happy, I think, in their case of
Both a good one.
Yes, yeah, and lots of fish eating.
No shit fitting. I think the patron said of charities. There we go.
Yeah.
Move's on there, right?
Move to approve the special event, the Saint Vincent de Paul Charity Walk on Saturday, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five from eight thirty AM to twelve PM.
Would my Mr. Gold or we'll go with Schlegel second. That's all in favor.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you don't really have a Nice. Thank you. That's gonna be one of you. All right. Lori Miles, come on up. Are you? All right.
Okay.
How are you? Let's talk about this change.
Okay, so
Yeah.
Based on our prior discussion, I amended the charge to include an additional two members an additional, uh, two members, um, the Citrus residential community. Um, that will represent coastal residents, but I eliminated the Massachusetts cultural management members. And I switched the, uh, the non-staff emergency management, uh, representative to the staff emergency management representative. And while I was at it, I amended a couple other things in the charge that I thought would make the, uh, the commission a little more, um, focused and hopefully, uh, have goals that are actually achievable, for it to be, you know, obvious. So, um, you have a question, Patty?
Page twenty-one, our packets. Uh, I mean, I'll, I'll just, I'll try, this is a great, great version, it certainly makes it more clear. Uh, more clear, the chart itself makes it clearer. No, and as we talked about from last time, about having those different groups on there, it's for a sense, um, yeah, and some of the other ones are just, uh, mostly clerical, but uh, mask changes, but it certainly, I think it makes much more doable, you know, going through that, flood plains, the marshland and the water quality, the emergency readiness, which I think was a great addition. I'll open up, questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I reviewed, I reviewed the, uh, proposal in detail, and I found it to be very appropriate, and I have no changes.
I was glad that this is ever being discussed, I guess, sir.
I'm excited that we got all of our people already. I mean, I noticed that you did strike out the, um, not yet, okay, um, the, like, the regional commission. And I understand, like, how daunting that would be, but like, ultimately, wouldn't it be better if we could work with all of our neighbors, similar to like?
Yeah, absolutely, but, um, I just, I thought that creating a, a whole organization similar to Cape Cod Commission, um.
Totally, I see, well, you mean other towns involved, yeah.
Yeah, so that, I think that the Cape Cod Commission is like, is very structured, I think there's, like, certain requirements for it, um. And I think that was achievable for this particular group, but certainly we can be regional in our thinking and cooperating with every neighbor.
I just have a, I thought you did a made up, and, um, it's incredibly clear and also updated, because some of the language was a little, right? So you did a great job. My question is regarding the resident coastal versus inland, and I see that you, we now have one, two, three, four, five? Uh, or was it?
Six residents.
Is it the six residents or two are inland and four are coastal? I guess it's just how important is it for someone to be inland or coastal?
Well, I think, so the state border community that we want to be involved certainly is more coastal focused. However, I think inland residents might be able to, uh, contribute to the, to the mission.
So, I, I just don't want to tie our hands in the future if we have another really great inland person, that's all. And I will also say, from my perspective, it's really important for, like, coastal are the most active involved, but we all pay for it. So I think it's really important state border wise to make sure you have your, um, inland folks really involved as well.
Is that, I understand, I understand the thought process, and I would generally agree that coastal residents are now the more likely candidates, but also probably more vested in general sense. But as a suggestion to address it, I do, I do like the idea of having certain designations, but if we're gonna have six residents serve on the commission, would it be logical to simply not handcuff ourselves to lists and that's too coastal, too inland, and too like?
Just residents.
Just residents, and then it gives you the ability to flex in the future if somebody's stepping off, you don't have a candidate available, but you have an interested party, you have flex seats.
That was just my thought, I don't want to tie our hands, tie your hands in the future.
That's fine.
That's, either way.
I understand.
We need a way to get your desire, but.
I like the idea of being able to flex if, if, I mean, right now, we've done this because it's satisfied very well, but you're right, it might change in the future, and since it's not.
Yeah, we don't have to re, we don't want to rewrite this.
Mr. Chair, I was thinking, just to share my, how this moves on a table, I was thinking we would see how this goes, and then we can revisit it next year. However, you know, with the comments that I've made, the idea of a balanced thing in having two unclassified, like, that didn't even occur to me, so I would be in favor of that. Even if we could go forward, if we could just have that change in this, in this time, it's fine, have two that are unclassified. All right?
Okay, but that, that's more what I thought, like, you can then flex if you have a really good, I don't want.
Yeah, either way, that's fine, I think that.
Sometimes we're too prescriptive, and I, I found.
Yeah.
Well, it's a fantasy football, inspiration. You're like, oh, the two flex spots, really?
Yeah. Anyway. That's my only. Are these every three-year events, or they?
Three, yes.
The rate was.
It was initially one-year appointments, but I changed that.
Door down, move.
And.
Motion, so I'll take a motion with the addition of, for the collection of the two, that flex.
Uh, move that the select board accept the proposed amendments to the Coastal Advisory Commission chart as written on eight twenty-seven, twenty-two thousand twenty-five, with the addition of non-classifying two of the resident members.
Second.
Seconded by, excuse me, moved by Mr. Gilmore, seconded by Schlegel, all in favor. Aye, aye, unanimous, thank you for your work.
Yes. Oh, now we, you have more than.
The appointments.
Yes.
Of the applicants.
Oh, okay. We have the list.
We have a list here.
Yeah, it's, um.
Oh, you're in twenty-seven.
All right, well, all right, since you're on the page, I'll let you make a motion, there you go.
Move to appoint the Coastal Advisory Commission, Dan, uh, Mark Curran as inland resident, Daniel B. Sullivan, and Elizabeth Crowley, coastal resident. Uh, who's the technical resident?
Chris. Oh, Chris.
Uh, Chris Riccio as the technical resident, and Liz Charlton as the business community resident for a term of three years, or until a successor is named.
Wait a second, Mrs. Harrison, all in favor, aye, unanimous, well done, well done, fly, look at that.
I get you, full commission.
I mean, now when we meet, I'm excited to get started.
All right, don't see Dan, says, she's got a, she's got a scaloos here.
Are we way ahead of?
Yeah.
We can go to the salt.
Do you want us to skip, do you want to go, it's up to you.
Dan's a, Dan's a black guy. There isn't, there isn't.
Yeah, wanna go, uh, where's, oh, road salt.
It's road salt.
This is, they get fascinated with Morton, uh, some Morton salt, yeah, Morton, Morton, they actually Morton salt company.
Yes.
Fascinating. Give it a rain, pour it, want to rain some pours.
Well, so the, um, it's time, like, we just did the gas and diesel, um, state contracts awards, it's time for road salt, I can bring it up.
Boo.
The good news is, um, it's the same rate as last year, sixty-eight eighty per ton.
Nice.
So, uh, we have a contract with Morton Salt secured through the Mass State Contract for road salt.
Again, state contract, all the same rate though.
Yeah, and we, we get a one percent discount if we prompt pay and.
And we always.
Now you're always prompt.
We always want. We are extreme components that account, and if there's a discount, we're gonna chase people around and.
How's the E for road salt, isn't the DPW, we're like absolutely.
We fill it up in the off-season, but sometimes they have more high-season events than low events, the last few years, and so they had to go out in salt more than they'd actually get.
So we hope they never have an access, bring in any more salt.
Oh, so this is just an agreement to buy it.
If we have a, if we can, it's an annual contract, annual contract.
I was like, how do we put more than?
Yeah, we just find a cleaning.
Yeah, well, we spray with the molasses, the deer.
And then they hit the.
When you spray the, the salt with the molasses mix, the deer come up. So you wait until the last minute, it's a very well fed deer. It smells like cookies.
Yes.
And that, oh, wait, did you know that we put molasses?
I didn't.
Did you know?
No.
Did you know that's right? It's, it's a molasses mix, it makes it stick better, so it doesn't bounce as much.
I'm glad, I'm glad. No, that's a brine, that was different, I have.
Other towns are fascinated, and it really does, of course, right, have another task, and look, what are you doing, and it, it doesn't save your money, it saves money, because it's actually it's better.
Secret recipe.
Yeah, secret Kevin's secret recipe, family recipe. How was the motion? All right, we'll take the motion.
Move that the select board award the contract to purchase road salt from the Morton Salt Company for sixty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents per ton.
Right, Mr. Gilmore, seconded by Mrs. Harrison, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Mr. Chair, if you want, your eight fifteen members are here.
Yeah.
Patrice, I'm a chef.
It's really just, pardon, Patrice.
Oh, I'm sorry, Patrice, I'm not good at, I'll just look it up with that. All right, let's talk about this uniform mural.
Yeah, we don't have.
I'm trying to give you my background, it won't come through, I don't know why. It's not.
You don't have that, of course. It's not allowing you to share.
We're just gonna discuss it, that's all.
It's, oh, here we go, I'm up. I have a new computer, so you're gonna just have to, uh, bear with me for a minute, is it okay if I share my screen?
Yeah, yeah, Patrice, go ahead.
Okay. Oh, boy, new computer, it's not, it's, it's giving me issues here. All right, here we are. Um, it's not allowing me to share for some reason, let me try this again. All right, let's try, ah, here we go.
There we go.
All right. Um, let's just bypass this, we just wanna look at this, this is all we care about. All right, so thank you for having me here, um, my name is Patrice May, and I am trying to, all right, let's just let that do that. All right, so I am representing Citrus Harbor Cultural District today, um, for those of you who, uh, know what that is, this is actually, we're coming up on our tenth anniversary. We were designated as a cultural district in November of twenty fifteen, and what that means, um, the Massachusetts Cultural Council, which is the state agency that, um, that invests in art and culture, uh, they realized the, the causal link between art, culture, and opportunities to experience that in a set place, and how that informs tourism and, um, residency in those decisions. So, um, they agreed that Citrus Harbor has a preponderance of, of those opportunities, and in twenty fifteen, they designated us as a cultural district. One of the things that you might be familiar with is the Art Walk or First Fridays, these, those are all part of our initiatives, um. But we're really excited, we've been wanting to do a mural, and we've been talking about this for quite some time, and with funding from Mass Cultural Council, we're poised to do that, and we just wanted to share some of our plans with you. So, um, we'd actually like to do a mural series, which is why you'll see mural one, um, but mural one for our mural series will be installed in Cole Parkway, and, um, I'll jump to that in a second, but I thought I'd give you a little bit of timeline first. So we did secure funding, which probably should have been the first thing that I noted, um, but we secured funding from MCC, and then in February twenty twenty-four, we began site identification. And we identified, I'll just give you a quick visual, um, so one Cole Parkway, the, uh, most of us know it as the hardware store in the bottom, coffee connection on the bottom in the back, and then Citrus Bowlway at the top. So that whole area where Citrus Bowlway is, it's just, I mean, we can take a look at it again. This is facing our harbor, tons of people congregate there, and it's sort of nondescript. How can we, how can we transform that into something that's more visually exciting and that draws people to our beautiful town? So, um, a mural, of course, so we identified that as our site, and we secured approval from the building owner in spring of twenty-four. In fall of twenty-four, we were discussing, um, what the owner thought, uh, he would like to see. He was, um, very interested in representational marine scene, but maybe with a little nod to some of the building uses as, as a bowling alley. And then in spring of twenty twenty-five, that allowed us to issue a call for artists. Um, we got some responses, we had our deadline of August first, and, um, the committee has met to review those responses and make a selection. We, um, have some concepts that I'll share with you. The artist, um, will be presenting us with three designs, and so next month, we're hoping to approve a final design and to see the process begin. So, um, hopefully in November, uh, the mural will be complete, and we'll have this beautiful celebration. We're excited to hopefully initiate this process in time for Art Walk, which, please save the date, and I should know it, but it's, it's the first Friday in October, I wanna say it's October third. Um, in any case, I gave you a sneak peek, we all know this building, right? So, um, like I said, it's ripe for having a little bit of a refresh, and.
Do you see a drum roll?
I'm married to a drummer, where is he? He's supposed to be always my support. So, um, the artist, Amanda Hill, gave us this concept, this, as you can see, is the peak of the building, and if you take a look, she's put these, those, um, marine. But she also has a couple little, there's a little bowling pin, there's a bowling ball, this is a very quick draft rendering. This is certainly not the final, but it just gives you a sense of what could be. And then, um, I'll show you what she's done in other buildings, like a completed project, as you can see, she makes it very seamless to the building itself. So I didn't know if you had any comments before I, I finalize it, but like, sort of impressions on, on what you think about this?
I think it's brilliant, I think it's delightful, I hope this one is successful, and I hope the next thing you consider is the alleyway between Cole Parkway and Front Street that is hideous.
I think we, uh, we are looking at some, so I don't know if any of you have.
The break, is it bring it up? Yeah.
Anyway, this is beautiful.
But I think that's great.
I love public art, this is amazing, thank you.
And, oh, and just, just a little shout out to us, at Heritage Days, you may have noticed a little selfie station, so the, uh, that was also funded by Citrus Harbor Cultural District in thanks, um, from funding from the Mass Cultural Council, and lots of people really enjoyed it, it was a really fun underwater scene, people had pictures with their family. Um, and so we are looking at that installation spot, which is next to a Damo Day Spa as a potential mural number two, so we've explored that. But that's, I'm getting ahead of myself, but that, that would be another place, and almost like a permanent selfie mural, so those are some of the ideas. I know, let's draw audiences.
Let's do it.
Let's draw audiences. So final comments before I let you move.
Awesome project, can't wait for it.
Yay, so a couple comments, planning and the building departments have reviewed and agree that there's no zoning bylaw prohibiting such work. The Citrus Police will be notified, notified of any start dates to provide police detail if warranted, and all businesses will be notified of the work ahead of time. So we've done our homework.
Yay, how is she painting that?
Like, is it spray, is it spray paint?
Or is it like a piece of paper? Not paper.
Wallpaper.
Like a wallpaper.
It's spray, yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Nice, well done, yeah. I don't know, you know, yeah.
We're gonna wrap the building like. No, then, we're gonna learn to do a challenge.
Dance like that, should show us. I love it.
Great, so that's it, that's my whole presentation, I just thank you, um, you know, for your volunteerism, we have a, a robust volunteer crew as well, and they, they really pulled it together this time, so I just wanna thank them as well as you. So I just wanna thank them as well as you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrice.
Thank you. Thank you. You're all yours.
Yes.
This has been years in the making.
Yes.
Love it.
For the filming specifically, or just?
For the, for the, yes. Finding a muralist, um, you know, just getting quotes. It's been a long time coming. So we're very excited. We even save enough, we get a grant every year. Um, and we've been, you know, it's fun to pay for the, the MCC series, the selfie station convention, the Art Walk event, we pay artist demos. So we're still doing a lot of this particular thing. It was a big ticket item. Unfortunately, because we haven't spent so much, we can do it.
Good, this is a good one.
Yeah. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Your muralists.
Muralists?
Yes.
All right, here it is. Back.
To the seven forty-five.
To the seven forty-five, do we have? He's dead, Mel, he's up, he's ready. Are you? I am. Right. Smile was here, seriously. What are you on?
It is page forty.
Do you have my presentation?
Um, we do have a presentation, you want, I have that word in front of.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, there it is.
Well, you're right. Start with Dishpan. Just, thanks for your grace. Uh, well, yeah, let's go through, uh, these projects. Yeah, take it away.
Okay, well, thank you for, for having us here. Um, before I start, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, I know you wanted Karen Conley earlier tonight, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention Karen's work on CPC. She was the chair when I started working with CPC. And I learned a lot from her, and she was my go-to person for a long time. Uh, not just the CPC, but with some other things. And she will be sorely missed, uh, by the town. And I just wanted to mention her and honor her memory, uh, in front of the town. So with that said, you could go to, whoops, you had the, uh, I was looking for the presentation, not.
This is the only I have.
Not, oh, okay. You should have had the other one with it. In any case, uh, I'll go through. Do you have the slides that I said?
No.
Um, Dan, I have it. I'll send it to Sam.
Okay.
This is the only I have.
All right, well.
Tell us about the Dishpan project.
Okay, so what we have right now, the first slide I would have shown you is the, uh, state of the financial, um, aspect of, of CPC today. Uh, we currently have three point seven million dollars in the fund, with about four hundred thousand in historic reserve, nine hundred and eighty thousand in open space reserve, two hundred and ninety thousand in community housing, and undesignedated, uh, we have just over six hundred thousand. And we have estimated receipts for two thousand and twenty-six of one point four million, uh, which gets us to the three point seven million total. We have, uh, projects that total, I won't, I will go through the four projects that we currently have on the table. Uh, the total is just about a million dollars. So at the, assuming that these are all approved, uh, we'll end up next, or into the next session with two point seven million dollars. The four projects we have, uh, put forth or approved for the November town meeting are Clap Road property, which is called the Dishpan property, so you may know it that way. Um, acquisition of that property, and we're looking, uh, we're, we approved seven hundred and fifty thousand for that project. Uh, thirty-five hundred for the GAR Hall lighting upgrades, hundred and forty-five thousand for the Cudworth House and Barn renovations, and a hundred and twenty-five thousand as the first phase of repairs or renovations to the Mordecai Lincoln property. The Clap Road property, if you could go back, uh, to the map, uh, for, for those of you who don't know, uh, it's off of Clap Road and behind some of the properties on Boothill Road. There are two lots owned by two owners who have agreed to join together and sell this in one transaction, uh, if it's approved by the town. The Conservation Commission applied for that. It's sixteen point four acres of property that are contiguous. Uh, they do, um, excuse me, above Conservation Property, that's, uh, right next to it. And, um, the Higgins McAllister Conservation Property is the property on the upper left-hand corner of that slide. They agreed to sell the property together in one transaction. Uh, they had con, con, they had contracted a appraisal of the property, and it came in. Uh, we wanted to do our own appraisal. We had an appraisal done, which was quite different than their appraisal, um, significantly different. So we had a third appraisal done, and it was really the differences with the methodologies used in the appraisal and what the assumptions were being made in the appraisals. In any case, the appraisals came in at seven hundred thousand, which is what the, the price of the uh, purchase they, the owners were looking for. And, um, we put in an additional fifty thousand dollars into the, uh, request for, uh, post-sales expenses, which includes putting the conservation restriction on the property. It may include closing costs and some other costs in making the transaction complete. The unused, obviously, of that money will be returned to the town. The, um, other part of this was that we, uh, put a condition that a purchase and sale we signed prior to the town meeting with the conditions that, uh, every, the appraisal goes fine, the inspection goes fine under property, uh, title search, and, um, also, uh, to have a purchase and sale of the place before the town meeting. And that's being worked on, I'll always write that. And we did unanimously vote to approve the project. I don't know if there are any questions on this before I move on. Next project.
Do we have water on that property?
Uh, there is a pond, uh, which used to be used for skating. Uh, there is some, uh, little bit of wetlands, I'd say about a third of the property is wetlands.
Is the idea to connect against McAllister and stop the walking fields come through that way? I mean, I'm assuming there's not enough frontage on the plot.
It was really to connect with the Higgins McAllister, the trails. And in fact, I think they've already put some trails through there, or made some unofficial trails, if you will, that, that go through the property. Uh, they have to do that in order to appraisal property, you can get on the site and go through it. So that was the intention there, rather than try and get something on Clap Road, which is not that large a frontage, if you go back to the map and look at that. So, yes. Any other questions? The next project is the GAR Hall.
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I sat in the meeting at CPC, then they voted for this. I think it's a, it's a very good usage of the funds. Anytime we can secure additional land like this, it's a good move for the town. And I like the idea that it does connect to our other property that we already have there. So I think it's a good, good thing to move forward to and bring it forward now.
The next project was the, uh, GAR Hall lighting upgrades. Uh, if you've been there, you, you may know at night, uh, that the, uh, the hall is, is pretty badly lit on the outside. Um, the lighting is old and breaking down. Uh, it needs replacement, basically. Uh, it's no longer safe for, for parking out there and lighting up the parking lot and the entrance to the hall. Uh, there are some pictures in the application which actually show the state of the lighting facilities. So, uh, the quotes for the replacing the lighting were forty-three fifty, uh, four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. The Historical Society is going to provide twelve hundred dollars toward the project. Uh, so with a contingency, uh, we asked us the funded CPC at thirty-five hundred dollars for the project, and we unanimously voted for this project.
Questions?
Well, I can, I have a great.
Yeah, thanks for that. Needs to be done. Okay, the next project is continuing, uh, work on the Cudworth House and Barn renovation for that coming under historical. Uh, the total project is looking for a hundred and forty-five thousand. The Historical Society requested to replace the roof on both the, uh, house and the barn, and there's also some work on the beams and the chimney, et cetera, and this will be managed by the Historic Society Property Manager. Uh, the total project cost is about a hundred and sixty thousand from their estimates, and includes the roof replacement and chimney repairs uh, that are included on both facilities. It includes house beam repairs in the house and the barn roof replacement as well. Uh, existing barn roof is twenty-two years old. If you look at the pictures, you look at the roof of both of these facilities, they're pretty old, uh, uh, material on the roof, so they need replacement. And they're gonna replace those with shing, cedar shingles on the roof. The Historic Society claims ten and a half thousand dollars for a project, and they say that eight thousand five hundred about is already earmarked by the town uh, for the property. So the request from CPC was a hundred and forty-five thousand, which does include some contingencies that we unanimously voted for this project as well.
What is the, you know, what's the lifespan of the cedar shingles?
Twenty years. Twenty years, Dan.
Twenty years, yeah. These are, I think, I think the barn's over twenty-two years.
Over red cedar shingles?
Pardon me?
Red cedar?
I'm not sure of the material. That would be up to the Historic Society. Uh, yeah, that's typically what they, they do.
But I just was on something like this.
And the last project, uh, that we have is the first request for the Mordecai Lincoln House. I'm sure there will be more. Uh, there's quite a bit of repair that needs to be done. Um, the three facilities that are there, the three structures that were there, I should say. Um, there was, uh, this request is to mitigate the most time-sensitive issues that were identified by their consultant, uh, that they hired, that the committee hired. Uh, and this was the, uh, Mordecai Lincoln Property Committee that put forth the application. Uh, they're looking to address four areas initially. One is a buffer around the foundations to try and stop the pest infestation that they've had and some of the, uh, vegetation damage that occurs around the sides of the house. And to seal all the entry points to keep the, uh, critters out of the houses and facilities. The second was to establish a drainage around the building foundations and seal the crawl space. Uh, if you've been in the facility and been in the basement of, believe one of the facilities, it's quite damp. There's leaking water and et cetera. The main house insulation needs replacement to protect the interior of the house. And, uh, they are going to look at Mass Save to see if there's any funding they can receive from that. They haven't done that yet. And the, uh, last part is to look at restoring the structural integrity of some of the damaged floorboards that are in the northeast corner of the main house. Uh, we had done, uh, when we purchased the property about five years ago, uh, we had a, a full inspection done of all three structures, and, uh, they have that in inspection, and there were quite, quite a few things identified in that inspection that need attention to. These are the most immediate ones determined by the committee. Uh, there are certainly more to come. And, uh, the request is for a hundred and twenty-five thousand from CPC. That includes a small contingency based on the information they have on these four items. And we did unanimously vote to approve this. Any questions? Here. And I, I'm sure there will be more requests coming from Mordecai Lincoln, because there are quite a bit of repairs that are needed on, I think, all three buildings there. The other thing, uh, so thank you for, for listening. I appreciate your, your time and your consideration on these projects. I would also mention, um, I just wanted to mention as a heads up, we have a project we're working on how, uh, to purchase, to look at purchasing the, uh, cranberry bogs that are off of, uh, that are in the west side of town. And, uh, we currently have a appraisal being done of that property. I won't, unfortunately, I won't get it back until mid-October. Uh, and we'll be working to vet that, uh, opportunity uh, starting at that time, and it looks like it will be just a purchase of a property that we'll be looking at.
This is the older bucket. What? This is the older bucket.
Yes, older bucket. It's, uh, almost ninety acres of property. Um, it's a beautiful property, uh, that's above water. There's quite a bit that's not above water. But the property that's above water is quite nice.
Do you have any estimate for what that's now being raised at, or?
No idea. I know the, um, Plymouth, uh, had a similar type of property, but certainly different circumstances. And they purchased the property for something like one point one million. I doubt this is gonna be that inexpensive.
At in expense.
I doubt it'll be that inexpensive, yes.
It'll be.
I think it'll be more than that, yes. My opinion. I have no idea though of not a property appraisal. I look forward to that appraisal when it comes forward.
Right.
Yeah.
I have an unrelated CPC question.
Okay.
Would the, um, speaker system, PA system at the high school qualify for CPC or no?
Say that again?
The, um, PA system at the, um, main, what do they call it? The main turf is portable.
Stadium.
The, for the stadium, yeah.
If it's portable, then.
I don't think it's portable, like.
Is it a permanent installation?
I don't support. Yeah.
Uh, we'd have, we'd have to take that into consideration. I know it has to be permanent, number one. I also know there are some restrictions on stadiums uh, that CPC has, on spending money on stadiums, so we have to look at that specifically. And, uh, the restriction I'm told, uh, that CPC, uh, CPA has on stadiums was really related to some of the, um, tracks that were involved in the stadium.
But that, the, that didn't come up, the sound system didn't come up when they were doing the whole renovation at all, so?
Nope, not at the time. Well, I, I'm sure it was discussed, but it wasn't part of the project as far as I know.
Yeah.
Right.
And, uh, we may have a discussion whether this should be funded by the school or by the town. That's always a discussion that comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Nancy, you're back up.
Who? I'm just for you this evening, if it please board. Both of them are decorations.
Good job, right? Don't kill yourself, man.
Right.
So the first one is for the Veterans Advisory Council. Josh made me aware of this one. I, I told him I would be here for it, so he does not have to attend the meeting. We're hoping that he will set that to a risk yet.
Showed me very nice.
Very generous.
Putting it towards the veterans' center, or are we done with it?
It's for the Veterans Advisory Council, so they can use it for any purposes towards veterans.
I will leave on that.
Yeah, ask someone about veterans' center.
No, I have that, I'll update for you guys.
Oh, good.
Lovely, honey, it's wonderful. I'll thank you for the and we'll take a.
Move that the select board accept the donations.
Move that the select board accept the donations totaled seven hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Veterans Advisory Council gift fund for the benefit of veterans of the town of Citrus.
Second.
By Julie Alferro.
Hi, commanders.
And these are memorial donations for veterans that passed from town, not Parkville, Anthony's.
Oh, it's.
It's a, a nice fitting thing to do. And the other one you have is a disbursement from the Patricia and Soneski Trust. Unfortunately, Mrs. Soneski passed in late April and the trust is being administered by her daughter Carolyn. And so uh a law firm sent paperwork to council on aging and asked them to sign to accept the thousand dollar disbursement. And so we're asking this board to approve that acceptance.
They're generous and, you know, the family are being involved so much. I think they're in that election.
Move that the select board accepts the one thousand dollar charitable donation to Citrus Council on Aging from the Patricia and Soneski Trust.
Okay.
By, uh, Julie Alferro, by Sarah's Alferro. Hi, commanders.
Thank you.
All right. We'll take, yeah, two. Any questions or concerns about either of these grain layers again? This.
Nothing. The paperwork's all there.
Paperwork's all there. We have no one to contact us.
I have grain layers.
God, I have grain layers.
Player of the grain. Multi player. All right, so no questions or comments or concerns?
Move to approve the grain layers license to Chris Fendosak Company and find county expert.
Move, Julie Alferro, by.
Second.
And we'll go with Nico and Alferro.
Hi.
Commanders, we'll take care of it. Please on reports, you left two.
Go ahead. Uh, I have a couple. Uh first, the um. So what I'm looking for, approvals have come in for the Pier Forty-four mission from the state, which means we can finally start going forward and uh porting first the project, which is excellent. The, the, it came through. It took a lot of energy and wine, but that's not surprising. Uh so all of the four investors updates.
What does that mean? What's the next step?
Next step, I believe, is that they're gonna start going after the grants that they want to achieve, try to help with the funding.
Okay.
Side of things. And then I think once they go through the middle process, they start on through the. Of all the approvals to try.
Yeah, we'll probably come in and see if they see the application.
Do we know what the cost of that is or are we gonna announce it?
Well, it's a drop.
We haven't got a cost on that.
I have some estimates.
Yes.
And you're not sharing them?
Uh I'll, I'll share with the board. I don't wanna promote that publicly yet until kind of just back in my envelope. So I don't want people going, oh my god, until we get a little better estimates, but I'll give you a little bit of all five percent.
And then my other question on that, are there different options or is it just on Vegas? It would be doing everything at once.
Uh that's correct.
Okay.
And I told them to get on your agenda, see you later.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that was a phased kind of option.
I thought it was phased. That's why I'm.
Yeah, they could phase it. Some of it they could phase.
Okay.
Well, I can't wait for the approval.
I can't wait for that too. I just, with our CPC.
Yeah, it sounds exciting.
With our CPC funds, phase is a good option so that you can kind of disperse our bond around town. You get something going, right?
Let the town grow with it too. Let the town grow with rather than a big seller. Let it marry us.
We don't want to get that too quick.
No, I just meant it's more you don't want it to stall because the number's so big. It's more what I.
Right.
Uh the other, please, a report's on the, so the example is, yeah, it's on the court, but I didn't wanna mention to the town that the high school is currently hosting the Spanish exchange student program from Natcho at lower in Spain in the Basque region. And uh the students are here. They're very weak. Uh so far, they held a welcome barbecue for the students and host families on Sunday at the uh aforementioned Pier Forty-four property and uh that worked very well. And uh I think the students have been to Family Park. They've been to, they're tomorrow touring the historical sites around town, I believe, uh as well as the Watson Museum and uh the students, situ higher, I'm not gonna gather up.
I believe there's sixteen students here.
Could we get, did you got before the morning?
Uh.
Are they still here?
They're here.
But next time we meet, there's ten.
They're not gonna be, no, they leave next Monday. They're here for ten days.
So we'll make sure they get some situ bone.
We are.
Yeah.
And uh the students playing being having a few senior students on Thursday.
Perfect.
Do you have any?
I'm hosting three.
Oh, six.
Uh hopefully they're having a great time.
What about, what are the, what are they gonna do on, do they have a whole schedule Thursday already?
They have a pretty busy schedule, actually.
Do you have the nine forty-five, nine eleven as far as they?
Uh I think on Thursday, I don't remember every day off the top of my head, but uh I believe they might be in place of the plantation.
Or.
Five o'clock, they're gonna, they're historical sites Thursday.
Excellent. That's all I have.
I have several. Um. The, okay, so eighteen to twenty countryway is going, been going in front of the planning board to be developed into apartments. So this came up at the Historical Commission as well as the Water Resources because the Historical Commission is concerned with the, so eighteen, twenty countryway is right next to Crest in Green Bush. And then the first mill is right to the right.
Okay.
And so apparently that was a big site for the uh, oh god, it was some war um.
Just be more.
Some war um, I want to be Spanish war, yeah, so.
Right, and Christmas.
War busy, mom. Yes, I remember I fell in there.
It's Spanish. Um so Historical is concerned with this because there may be archaeological findings at the site. Um Water Resource is obviously concerned with it because it's in a zone A. Um and I believe that's continued on the planning board maybe for two weeks or maybe, I don't remember, but. Um.
Wait, there's already a building on the.
There's two buildings.
Right.
On it.
Eighteen and twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're looking to turn it into condos.
Gotcha, okay.
Um. Uh the Historical Commission also is looking to get the Mordecai Lincoln property on the National Historic Registry. Um the planning board had a discussion about the Casa Verde restaurant down on Front Street, which they um continued until, I believe, this Thursday. So the, the restaurant is where Dunkin' Donuts used to be. They have these big windows that um slide out, pop out. And then there's um street signs right next to the road that they wanna put tables in. Um so obviously the waitstaff would have to walk through the background and pop back to these tables. These tables would be right on the road, which there's no parking.
The front, uh Front Street?
On Front Street. So there's no parking.
Maybe they'll take out before us.
The issue is their special permit from the planning board specifically says no outside seating.
Yeah, I don't see how you could have it. It's so narrow.
So they have to go to the planning board to get that lifted before they even come to the sport given.
Um so they'll continue that, I believe, on Thursday. Um I personally feel that, like, I walked around the harbor yesterday and it's tricky, like, if you were in a wheelchair to try to get in front of the Hibernian, if you were trying, like, just.
Just like the social.
Yeah, hundred percent. Like, there's a lot of um holes and things. And I feel like it might be a good idea to get more of a standard sidewalk by law or.
There is thirty-six inches they're handing to me.
I guess. My only thought on that is having, if they, if they really have a condition on their special permit, but then all the other restaurants don't, there seems to be an equity issue, but um I'm not saying, because I would be more interested with that, but I'm just, let's see how they handle it.
Yeah.
Because I wouldn't wanna have one restaurant on Front Street have a condition on their special permit, but all the other ones don't. That would be a problem. I would.
Questions?
But that would be a question I would have.
All right, good.
All right, so the veterans. They are raising money for a new um Vietnam memorial.
Yeah, it's more like a veterans day.
Love it.
Um so they needed some money of that, that I think they, it's half-funded. Um.
How much would they look? Cause of? Done a step square, I think.
Step square?
Yeah. Lot's of square.
Yeah. I never wrote that down. I'm quite sure that I didn't, but I was a forgiver. Um there was a gentleman there who wanted to put memorial banners up around town permanently on all of the um telephone poles in town. I guess they do it in Bridge One.
Wait, every telephone pole in town? I guess not Front Street.
Uh not on Front Street, uh around town.
They were, uh yeah, we're in Ridge.
Yeah, um I didn't know are like signed by law or, you know, it seemed like it would be.
Ridge Tree, yeah.
Yeah, uh so I feel like that if they need to come before us, needs some more um discussion.
More.
I think they shone special sections. They might just like yay.
Yeah, well, everybody could all that.
Uh yeah, no, they were about yay big. They had a thing. Um I guess they did it in some town. I can't remember which one, but it was just for November. Um this, this proposal was for the entire area. Um. The uh MIA chair apparently needs repairs, so they're looking into, I guess it's, you know, faded chip, I don't know yet. Um.
Yeah.
The, the, the chair at the, the missing action chair at the stadium.
Oh, yeah, just.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
That's up.
I think some help already, so they're looking into that to see um what it's gonna take to um fix that. The um Cuthbert Cemetery, they just uh raised the rates for um the cremains from a hundred to one hundred and fifty and um the vaults from a hundred to three hundred. I guess they only have about uh around a hundred and thirty um spaces left in that cemetery. When they take about ten um, you know, burials or cremains here. So they're, you know, with this expansion at Gates, um we might want to consider expanding the veterans cemetery. Um the Connors Memorial is about four hundred thousand dollars away um from their hole and they're moving forward on that, obviously. And I toured the um.
The amount of what? How much is it? Don't forget.
Oh, it's millions. It's.
So you're staying pretty close to this from here.
There are, there typically we get two numbers from them. One is committed and one is in the bank. Usually the committed numbers a lot are in the bank, so I'd be interested in all three numbers. I was, I think they were supposed to.
Did you send them a letter or a letter of mental, mental?
Yeah, they're gonna get them to come back.
And they.
So who are we going for us?
Um I toured the WPA building um with Mike from IT and Cam from the facilities. Mike estimated it to be about, um they wanna put the veterans center there. If you guys don't know, the um offices upstairs and then a meeting space um downstairs.
And the bathroom downstairs.
No, the bathroom's completely ADA compliant.
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah, the bathroom's upstairs is completely ADA compliant already. Um.
So they have that.
Right, right, right.
Mike estimated it would be about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for fiber optics. So for um security cameras and running the lines from the.
A pay brad.
Yes. Um and then, so all in, we're thinking about two fifty, but I question that with the ADA compliance. There's a stone walkway to the left. Uh Josh's idea was to have the ADA access in the back, which is a kitchen and it's a very short ninety-degree turn, like it's probably thirty-six inches for the ninety degrees. I think you have to go through the front. Um but there are obviously, there, so they're going after a grant. Nancy's going after a grant for that.
Does the heritage grant um application will fully reopen? How, how, you know, how much money is my grant? No, it hasn't reopened yet. They rewarded this town last year.
Right. Um and my only other question, Sharri, I saw on the um future gates. I know that Historical Commission is down a member and they were hoping that they could.
Do they have issues with farm?
I don't think they have issues with a farm. They just wanted a member.
So maybe we can talk about that after, that, because we're putting back, we have two people that have come in the next meeting that could make the in August.
Okay.
Um so we've been trying to only do if they're having issues with the farm. Because we're gonna renew, we're gonna re-up again starting like April, so we're not, I mean, we're far away, but we're not really that far away.
Good, it's gonna be summer soon.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, good.
So we can talk about it. If there's issues with farm and I have no issue with applicants in board yet, they feel like they have someone that wants to come in for the application that they've already recruited and that's like my.
All right, good on me. That's all my leads.
I love it. So uh.
I can just give one update on Freya's, the veterans plaque.
Yeah.
Uh they came to me about that. I told them we would find half out of our budget, which we've done. So they're trying to chase the remaining twenty-five hundred through that. So we put the deposit up for the, to get it going and they have to get that.
So uh I, tomorrow night I assist the city, I have a heritage committee and then on Thursday night I have Portwood Housing Trust meeting. But anyway, okay. Uh last week, uh I went to the Citrus Housing Authority meeting. I met the new director, Deb. She's very competent. I was very impressed with her approach. I think she was only seven days into her existence with us, so she's being very analytic and doing a lot of listening. They have a new consultant that signed on board who has an extraordinary background and reputation. Uh he's from the former head of the Cambridge Housing Authority. Um they're gonna try and move off of the stacks of paper that filled the office there and get it all onto a digital air map, which I think is always a good move for efficiency. Also learned that we actually have now six units at Ninety-One Front Street that are rated as affordable units. And I don't think anybody ever knew about.
I think that's the one in uh the market, market now?
Yeah, it's there. It's kinda cool. One was up for, for sale, so I think that grinds last week. I don't know the outcome of it. But all in all, a very active meeting with the very good people at that. Everybody knew their, their uh, their muster there and excellent reporting format. Uh their financials and everything are, are made available. Uh right down to the veins lump, which is very impressive for a bigger organization that. So I look forward to the next meeting. That's all I have, just to share.
I don't have much. Um well, cause CPC, Mordecai Lincoln, Tom Tom, they're up here. Um Sister Cities meeting on September eleventh. And Waterways, the only update I have is they are gonna meet again out of cycles so that they can get their memo to us. They have two memos coming to us. One regarding the Harbor Master Building and what they're, what they're looking for. And second regarding rates, we hopefully have the four way five year plan and that we will have an onload. I told them that they were gonna be, I think, because they were regarding the rate cycles, they would have to be on the end of September, beginning of October, meeting agenda, so they're. on the end of September, beginning of October, meeting agenda, so they're. We will get that update from them, and then before was meeting with them.
Excellent.
So.
And Commissioner of Disabilities tomorrow, we had a financial forecast, I think we've sent around, um, for minus numbers from Nancy, we're just going to wait until then October, update on revenues and all that information. First one, yes?
I have none.
None.
All right.
I have one more thing, I'm sorry.
I did go to Bill and Paul's disaster, uh, speech about my relapse.
How the hell?
Um, it was scary, um, they were, they recorded it though, and I, um, I would recommend that if anyone had, you know, it would give me an hour.
Did you sleep that night?
No.
I did, I slept very well.
All right, and then, you want me to do the minutes?
Sure.
Uh, so we have two minutes, right? Move to accept select four minutes for August nineteenth, twenty, twenty-five, and August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. Further move to accept and not release executive session meeting minutes for August nineteenth, twenty-five.
Second, Sarah's in, second by Mr. Gilmore in favor.
Hi.
Dennis, motion to adjourn, sign the documents.
So.
Sarah's in, second by Niko in favor.
Bye.